The second regular December meeting of the Taunton School Committee shall come to order. If we could kindly stand for the pledge and the National Anthem.
My pledge alleges to the fire of the United States of America and to your power, for which you stand on the mission under your and the discipline of liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early night? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Mrs. Fagan?
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. If you could remain standing, we have two, two more obituaries here for people that were associated with the Taunton Public Schools. First one is James Ritchie, age eighty-seven of Rainham, passed away peacefully on Tuesday, December tenth, surrounded by his family. He was the cherished, cherished husband of Carol J. McCarthy Ritchie, with whom he shared nearly sixty-six years of marriage. He'll be remembered for his positive outlook on life that kept him young and at heart. He always greeted everyone with a hug, could always find something to joke about, and had a passion for helping to shape the hearts and minds of young people. Although his health failed him, he continued to maintain his passion for youth and positivity. Born in Pennsylvania, he spent his formative years there, graduating from Harbick High School, and after graduation, joined the U.S. Army, serving in the Army Security Agency stationed at Fort Devens, where he met Carol on a memorable blind date. He pursued higher education at Boston University, earned a bachelor's degree, and later obtaining a master's degree from Bridgewater University. He dedicated his career to teaching, to education, teaching at Taunton High School for thirty-two years. In addition to his early years, including, included coaching the Taunton High School basketball team. He and Bob Daly, who also passed away not too long ago, were the best of friends and were both hilarious together. I remember them being here because my oldest son was at Taunton High School when they were here. And they, they were, the two of them were just always joking and wonderful, and everybody who knew them knew that, that they had a lot of fun together. He carried his passion for sports with, with coaching his son's Little League and Babe Ruth teams. He coached with enthusiasm, emphasizing the importance of sportsmanship and having fun. He ended his career at, at his teaching career, I'm sorry, at Taunton High School as the head of the business department. Upon retirement, he ran for assessor in the town of Rainham, and I guess with his winning ways, he was served there for six years. And he, he, he found a lifelong friend in Roger Howlett, and their, their friendship exceeded their years as assessors. Throughout his retirement, he cultivated a loving relationship with his grandchildren and great grandchildren who called him Da, playing significant roles in their day-to-day lives. He was, he could always be found cheering his granddaughters in across-country and track meets, and often with a stopwatch in hand to shout times in encouragement. You could also see him standing along the outfield fence at grandson Travis's ballgames away from the crowd. His great-grandson James brought him joy as he watched James begin his journey in organized sports. And he was deeply committed to making a difference in the, difference in the life of his great-grandchildren. Until his death, James remained an active member of the Pilgrim Congregational Church of Taunton. He served on most boards and committees, the last being the Board of Trustees. Beside his wife, he is survived by his three children, four grandchildren, four great-grandchildren, and as well as a fifth great-grandchild, Harper Maureen Ritchie, expected this April. And accordance with his, his wishes, his services were all private. But he was really an integral part of our Taunton High family, and we, we keep his family in our thoughts and our prayers. The next one is Mary Ann D. Thompson Kelly. Mary Ann grew up in Norwood, Massachusetts, passed away on December tenth at the age of eighty-one, and will forever remain in the hearts of those touched by this, by this precious presence in their lives. Family and friends are what were welcome to leave their condolences on this memorial page and share them. She was predeceased by her parents, she is survived by her husband, her children, one of whom is Jeffrey T. Kelly, who is the Martin School Assistant Principal, her siblings, and she also leaves four grandchildren and several nieces and nephews, and her visitation was, has already gone by. She had a funeral mass, actually today, at St. Catherine Church in Norwood. So please keep this family in your thoughts and praises. Very difficult time of year to lose family members, but we really, really wish to honor the people that, that have been of service to us and to their families when they pass away. So moment of silence for these two individuals. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Secretary Fagan. Now we'll start with our roll call.
Certainly. Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mrs. Shavz.
Present.
Mr. Pawlowski.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Ms. Santos.
Present.
Mr. Viera.
Present.
Mr., um, oh my God, Mr. Laura.
Laura. Present.
Long day. And Dr. DeMello?
Present. Thank you, Mrs. Secretary Fagan. Next up, we have approval of minutes of December four, twenty twenty-four. Which is the committee?
Motion to accept as presented, December fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
On discussion, Ms. Lassiter, on page four, just a, a quick typo. I know I was coming in via Zoom, so I, I guess it wasn't clear. But on the paragraph that starts with Dr. DeMello, page four, the part that says careers, uh, you know, it starts with involvement, careers in phonics, it's actually photonics. Instead of phonics, it's photonics. And I know I was coming in via, via Zoom, so it wasn't very clear. So just, just with that correction, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, we have our student advisory report, and with us tonight, we have Natalie Duncan. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Natalie Duncan, and I am a member of the Student Advisory Committee. We are approaching a relaxing Christmas break, but Taunton High is still as lively as ever. National Honor Society acceptances will be released this week for qualifying juniors and seniors. Also this week, DECA students are taking their exams that will be calculated into their scores when they compete at the district competition on January ninth. Taunton High Band has been especially busy recently. Last night, there was a band concert for small ensemble bands. Tomorrow night, Thursday, December nineteenth, there will be a band concert for all of Taunton High Band. Taunton High's band also performed at the Lighting of the Green and marched in Taunton's Christmas parade. Tomorrow morning, there will be a Term One Recognition Breakfast to celebrate twelve students who had excellent performances this term. Each department in this school selected one student to recognize. Winter sports have begun, and the season is off to a great start. The winter track team had their first meet last night and placed third. Girls and boys' basketball have their games against North Adverall today, and our hockey and swim teams have games today as well. The Hockamock Winter Sports Captain Conference took place last Friday, and captains from Taunton High were in attendance. Today, there were tryouts for the cheerleading team, and the trials will continue tomorrow as well. Clubs at Taunton High are doing very well. There has been a club spotlight during lunch recently, where clubs advertise themselves during lunchtime. Clubs like Drama Club, Interact Club, and Active Minds have participated. We also have a variety of new clubs, including MedLife, Hosa, an indie animation club, and a genealogy club. We have two upcoming spirit days to prepare for winter break. Tomorrow is Ugly Sweater Day, and Friday is Denim Day in memory of janitor James Dewicki. The cafeteria introduced two new menu items recently, a chicken bacon ranch sandwich and a Nashville hot chicken sandwich. On Friday morning, the Mr. THS contestants and hosts will be announced. That's all I have for you today, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Natalie. Mrs. Fagan, Secretary Fagan.
Um, the cheerleaders, that's cheerleaders for basketball, right?
Yeah, the winter cheerleaders.
Except for from?
Yes, except for from the fall ones.
Well, that's how we get so many girls into cheering, right?
Yep.
And how long do they, when, when do the basketball games start?
I think the first ones were today against North Adverall.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
I open up to Mr. Pawlowski about the chicken sandwiches. Any input on the, I mean, you're the aficionado of chicken, right?
I haven't had a chance to try them yet.
Okay, maybe next time, Natalie, we can get some chicken sandwich, samplers.
I might have to deputiesize my daughter. She'll, she'll try it for me.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Okay, which is the committee?
Motion to receive and place on file.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Natalie. Have a great Christmas. Take care.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Next up, we have public input. Do we have anyone signed up for public input tonight? No one signed up? Thank you, Ms. Lassiter. No public input. Next up, favorite part of the agenda, Superintendent's Report, which is the Governance Corps, School Boards, Superintendents, and Schools Working Together, by Davis Campbell and Michael Fulon. Superintendent?
Yep, so we are almost done with our first book study, and we are on chapter seven. And chapter seven focuses on systems thinking and strategic planning. So there were five key points. If you read the summary that I provided in the packet, and I appreciate those who read, who read the chapter. But the five key points in the chapter focused on establishing strategic directions and outcomes, providing policy direction and approvals, offering stewardship and support for district efforts, ensuring oversight and accountability, and exercising community leadership. Of the five, during my reading, of the five, four really resonated with me as far as the work of this group, which was the strategic direction, and what I thought was key was, and I think this board does a really good job of this, is not mistaking aspirational beliefs as actual strategies of the board or direction of the board. I also enjoyed reading the portion of the chapter regarding stewardship and support. So I think that's something that this board does an excellent job of as well. Community leadership, I think this board does an outstanding job as far as modeling and working as a group to message all the great things taking place in our district and bringing to my, to me and my team their concerns so that we can address them at the building level. And then obviously, something that I talk a lot about with my leadership team, and we'll be discussing tomorrow during our all-admin meeting, is like we are really navigating an ever-changing world. When you think about AI, mental health, and everything that's going on in the world today, to be part of a school board during these, you know, trying times, and also during times where there are such rapid changes in how it's impacting education, while trying to maintain our moral imperative and stay focused on teaching and learning, you know, those are, these are challenging times. So those are just my thoughts and my key takeaways, and obviously, I provided you with three discussion questions. So if anyone wants to elaborate or just discuss their feelings, this is what the time is for. If not, we can just approve and move on.
Thank you, Superintendent. I know that some of our members are anxiously waiting to share their thoughts regarding this chapter. Mrs. Santos, I know you definitely.
Yeah, I'd go for the guys. Yeah, I just.
I, I know Mrs. Santos was enthusiastic.
Yeah, I, I just want to thank the superintendent for putting this book study together with our consultant, Anthony Bond. I'd like to thank Donna Shavz, Christine Fagan, and Melissa Santos for articulating so well, um, you know, the chapters and the points in the chapters that are notable. So thank you so much, and I appreciate the work that we're doing as a committee. I, I can't wait to read them.
What?
So I got from the bottom of my heart, thank you, ladies.
Mr. Viera, check the amount of chapters before you make your closing remarks on the book study. But good effort, good effort. Back to you, Mrs. Santos. Anything you want to share?
Uh, just a couple of things that came up to me. I mean, some of this thing, I felt like it was sort of repeating itself after reading, you know, what we've read so far. So one thing that I think I was a little confused on, right, because it says that our goal as a board is to come up with strategic actions and strategic goals. So I was just wondering how that separates from what your strategic goals are. They're separate. So are we, we're supposed to come up with our own kind of, and I think there was a mention of that at the last retreat, but we never got to it because we went over.
Yeah.
So I think that's something for the next retreat, that we can maybe start with something like that, like so that we have, like kind of a clear goals for all of us.
Yeah, so I think Dr. Benton really did a nice job of articulating that my goals or the district's goals are separate from the school committee goals. And you're right, during our last retreat, we ran out of time. So our second retreat is scheduled for January twenty-ninth. And I think back in the summer, one of our earlier retreats, we talked about using that time to work with our police department, our local responders, on how they would respond to a crisis. So we can either go down that route, or we can shift and work on developing school committee goals. So that's something that we can talk offline about, in what direction the school committee wants to go. Because we haven't had one of those exercises, I want to say almost seven years when we did one of, and I'm looking around the room. I think only two people may have been there, or three people may have been there from this board when we had that last round. So it might be, we might want to maybe look at how we can try to squeeze ten pounds, amplify pound bag.
Yeah, and I mean, some of that stuff could be like a Google Doc or what have you, you know, like as many members we can add to it, like without having to, um. Without having to do like a separate meeting, I mean, something to think about. But then the other thing I just wanted to mention was on, towards the end, but they talked about the major part of the job is to educate and inform the community regarding the work of the district. I know how you love newsletters. Um, I was just wondering, I don't know, it could be something to think about, as like a school committee newsletter.
So in the, in the newsletter that we do put out, which will probably be going out beginning of the year, right after the new year.
Well, something for us to like add?
There is a section for the school committee.
Oh, okay.
So if there's something that, maybe that's something Dr. DeMello, Mrs. Fagan can reach out to the other board members for any input.
If there's anything that you'd want to add. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Santos. Mrs. Shavz, anything you want to add? I mean, I'm not picking on you.
I noticed now we're getting called on here. I didn't raise my hand.
I'm coming around, I'm coming around.
If you want to.
Mr. Pawlowski, so.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Mello. So what resonated with me in this chapter was the oversight and accountability. So I think, I think we're starting to do a much better job with this, where it's literally speaking about using data to evaluate whether policies and programs are effective. So we have to have a long-term view of a lot of this stuff, not just of this board, but the board that will exist in two years from now. You know, we're voting to implement certain policies, different things, we're approving things. It will be nice to see after a year, after two years, after three years, the actual data, to see how things are working. And the thing that comes to mind is, you know, we've recently implemented the, the reset rooms at the various different levels. And, um, you know, in the school improvement plans, we asked the question like, well, hey, you know, what, what's the outcome? What, what have you seen? Like, it sounds like a great idea in theory, but it will be really nice to see the objective data. Hey, before we had these things in place, these were the suspensions or the dysregulations or whatnot. After a year of having it, here's where those things have gone down. After two years, three years. So I think if we really start asking those questions, like, hey, yeah, we like this thing, it sounds great in theory, put it in place. When are we following up? Is there a report a year out or six months out or whatnot? Because then we can actually look back and say, hey, the choices that we made, were they effective? Or, hey, the choices the last board made four years ago, is that effective? And, and if not, then what, what do we do? Do we pivot? Do we, do we try something else? So that's a, that's a responsibility of ours that I think it's a, it's difficult to have that, that thought, or that long, long-term view. But I, I can see that we are, are making strides towards that, so.
Excellent point. Thank you, Mr. Pawlowski. I mean, I'm not going to pick on anybody, but if anybody wants to add. I, I know Mrs. Fagan does, because she called me at six in the morning looking for a copy of the book, so she got it.
Well, I think there were poltergeists around taking the books. I was troubled by a lot of the things in this chapter, to be honest with you. I, I think it was all over the place with some things. At first, I felt like they were saying, you've got to be a bobblehead doll, and whatever the administration said, you'd go, yep, 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 yep. And I said, well, that's not right, that, you know, we can't be like that. And then I got into the book a little bit later, and they started talking about the responsibilities that we have, the fiduciary ones, and the ones concerning staff, and, and whether or not staff is happy. So there were some things in here that I was very conflicted with. I don't know how anybody can talk about moral issues, because moral issues are personal. And when you start saying, whose moral issues are we talking about here when you're talking about things like that? So I found a lot of the stuff in there, in here was very, very conflicting. It says here, it says, this is, I guess for you, your future success as a superintendent of schools will depend on how well you can adapt to societal change. There's so much stuff changing in our society right now that it would make your head spin. What's the stuff you pay attention to? What's the stuff you don't pay attention to? The worth of the educational process to the children you serve will in large part be dictated by the way in which you and your board can change your system to meet the demands that society will, society will place upon your students. I'm not sure if I like some of the things that are being placed upon students, you know what I mean? So I was very conflicted reading this. I could make an argument about a lot of the things that are in here. But I also know that there's stuff that we just have to do, that we have to be part of, and one of them is to question whether or not. So I, oftentimes, I feel like when we start to question something, people want to perceive you as being negative, but it's not. You're doing your job. And I, I mean, that's the job we have to do. And one part in here, I remember reading that they said, if, if the system, one of the things I work, worry about a lot is when the money's going to dry up, because I'm afraid of that. I'm continuously afraid of that. I've been very vocal about that. But, you know, you keep hearing about all the money, and everybody's looking at money now. I guess interest rates are going to start tanking at, at banks and stuff like that for, for, because, no, everybody's a little bit frightened with stuff. But I wonder what happens to us, and I don't want to, they say if, if you go belly up, it is a tendency, excuse me, of the electorate to say, well, it was the school committee's fault. So we have to be careful. So when we argue about things, sometimes it's the monetary part of it. Sometimes it's whether or not, you know, the people you know in the community buy some of this stuff. There are people that are concerned about things in this community, and some of them is the behavior in schools. Some of it, you know, the cell phones in the school, and I know people feel differently about cell phones, excuse me, but I've heard that they, they've done away with them in Brockton. I guess the behavior has changed quite a bit because of it. So we have a lot of things on the plate, not always good for the students as a whole. So that's, that's why I, I struggled a lot with this chapter, and I hope I didn't say too much. I probably did, but it's okay.
If I could, I think that's the beauty of a book study, is you get different perspectives. And I agree with you one hundred percent. Mrs. Moynihan and I, we worry every day about last year's budget, the budget within this year, and thinking about the budget next year. So everything that you articulated, Mrs. Fagan, especially about what do we prioritize? Because in the life of a superintendent, life of a school board, I mean, I'm sure the new members didn't anticipate that being a school board member would be as difficult or as taxing as, as it is, because you're dealing with so many different issues that pop up every day. So that's, that's why I enjoy having these deep conversations, that we can get to the root of these issues and do what's in the best interest of our district and our students.
Well, I always, I, I always try to present myself as I, I ask a lot of questions, because I do worry about a lot of things. But when you've been here a long time, you start to see patterns that, you know, things that have gone bad and things that haven't worked right. I mean, we've, we've done programs that haven't worked well, but I think we can, I, I would like to see some honesty. And like they say, you know, you only do well if you're getting, if people are giving you the right information. If people aren't giving you the right information, then you're going to struggle with knowing what's really going on. So I think, I think, do we have some problems? Yeah, I do. I, I worry about the flow of parents that comes in here, and, and we've seen it several times with concern about student behavior. And we know that, because they've been in here, they've been in here with the teachers when there's been an issue, and, and the parents would say their kids aren't happy at school. We, we heard that up at Martin School. When we were up there, there was a lot of concern about the behavior, you know? And, and different schools, there, there are issues with that, you know, and how do we handle that, and how do we deal with it, you know? So I think there's an awful lot of stuff there, and I think we just have to keep trying to do the best we can. And I'm all for once, once we have, once you've established something, well, you know, that, that was the vote of the committee. I may not have agreed with it, but we're going to go with the vote of what the committee did. But I think people have to understand, we are all different, we all bring a different moral value to things. And it was when they stopped putting in words like morality, I'd go, what is that doing in there, you know? So I, you know, there was a lot of confusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Fagan. So anybody else before I comment? So, Ms. Laura?
One of the continuations that we do as a board member, myself, speaking in different forums in the community and radio and so forth, is I continue to promote the, our leadership as a team, because we work well together. There are problems that we confront on, on weekly basis and issues and so forth. But as a committee, we may let the community know that, that we're working together on issues of pros and cons, on different agenda items, but that we continue to promote that we understand, we listen to people. If I talk with people, whether it's educators, whether it's at the elderly, I, I explain to them on a regular basis how important it is that our job is not, not that we are elected as one member of the board, but we are collectively working to better our school system. So in our leadership, I mean, whether I'm on the radio, whether I'm at a school, whether I'm here or at the university or the college, I continue to tell people that, yeah, there are problems. Every school system has them, but it's how well we work together as a team to make sure that the majority of us move us ahead in a positive way, and that we'll be continuing to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I mean, you know, I, I joke a lot about the book, and, you know, sometimes we, we have some laughs, but this is all serious stuff, right? But I, I think you said it best, as we read these chapters, we always have our say in this. And honestly, if, if we, I think there's nine chapters, there's eight members, and the superintendent can be part of this. We each took a chapter and dissected it and kind of like peer-reviewed it, right? In the academic world, we peer review and counterpoints and so forth. I think we could actually publish our own book, which would have some value. So something to think about. I mean, it's not that hard. I mean, you know, something that we should definitely think about. What do you think, Superintendent?
Again, we presented at the conference last month, and from there, I've heard two superintendents have told me that they're going to start the same book study. They've asked me for the book and copies of our summary so that they can lead that work, and I like your jigsaw idea, because we'll get through the book faster.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, it's valid. You know, like Superintendent said, I mean, there were, there were multiple superintendents in the room. And I'll tell you, they have no clue, I, I don't want to disparage it, but I, they have no clue sometimes, you know, of the relationship between a superintendent and the school committee members. They don't talk, you know, they, they're afraid to talk, or they're told not to talk, whatever it may be. I don't know, any member here that doesn't pick up the phone or text the superintendent that he doesn't get back to, right? I mean, we all know that. So, I mean, we're doing something right, and I think people could learn from us. So if we have some time over the summer, maybe we could do that, and each take a chapter and peer review it and put some thoughts together and try to publish it. Okay? Thank you. What's that? Where's Waldo? No, 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 seriously, I mean, it, it, listen, it's not that hard to, to kick out. Yeah, it could be. It's part of your, your idea, too, right? Exactly. So that's my thought for today. So we're just going to motion to receive and place on file. What do we do with that? Fill board.
Can I just make one last silly comment?
Sure.
I just really appreciate this board modeling to the public and to our students and to our staff members what it means to be lifelong learners.
Absolutely. Good.
Motion made?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, administrative business. We'll start off with staffing reports, enclosure. Any questions, comments? Let me get to that page. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, we have the Taunton Public Schools staffing update. See enclosure.
Yeah, just to give the committee a quick update, we're 96% staffed, three remaining district-wide positions, two vacant positions at Pole, we have one vacant position at Friedman, one at Parker Middle School, and two at Taunton High School. And you have the breakdown on the backup.
Received and placed on file.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have the Taunton Public Schools District Enrollment Update.
So just wanted to make the committee aware, since October 1st, 2024, where we had an enrollment of 8,315 students. As of last week, we stand at 8,358 students. The greatest gain in enrollment was in preschool, which that'll be ongoing throughout the school year as students age into the program. So we can expect to see those numbers increase. We had 14 students enroll in our preschool program, and we also had 12 students enroll in the fifth grade. And we also saw enrollment increase at the Taunton Alternative High School and Taunton Public Virtual Academy, which accounts for the decreased enrollment in grade 12 at Taunton High School. And I provide you with the backup and the breakdown on the second page. And if anyone who's wondering what the acronym SP stands for, those are students on the backup, which is the fourth, fourth line from the bottom. SP are 18 to 23, 18 to 22-year-olds who are housed at Taunton High School in the alert program.
Thank you.
Same procedure. To accept and place on file.
Just a couple of questions. So the TV, the TPVA and the TA, TAHS, are those just for 12th graders?
I believe the Taunton Alternative, the Taunton Public Virtual Academy, 8 through 12.
Eight through 12.
And the Taunton Alternative High School, we want the students to complete their ninth grade year, so 10 through 12.
10 through 12. So between 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, there's approximately 23 students that we lost. Do we know of those 23 students? Do they make up the 30 extra students that have gone to those two places?
Based, based on the, I mean, I can drill down deeper and get those actuals for you, but I believe yes.
I just worry about students dropping out. So I was just hoping that they were going to one of our other schools versus just dropping out of school.
And I think that's why you'll see the numbers at Taunton Alternative High School, especially come March. That'll be like the next enrollment cycle. And Taunton Public Virtuals, that's ongoing. That's rolling.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Which is the committee?
Received and placed on file.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you all. Next up, we have the field trip request, the DECA competition. In your packet, you have a field trip request by trip supervisors Jesse McPhail and Molly Sullivan, taking 158 students, let me repeat that, 158 students to the competition down in Hyannis, taking place from January 9th to the 10th. And I reviewed everything. Everything looks complete. There was an amendment that was added today when the original cost was published for the chaperones. It came in a little bit higher. It was initially 100 and $1,650 and came in at $1,750. It was just cost of doing business, I guess, but we are in compliance with the student per chaperone ratio, which is very, very important. And what are the wishes of the committee? Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have subcommittee reports. We'll start out with curriculum subcommittee Chairman Santos.
Thank you. So the curriculum subcommittee meeting that on December 5th, Thursday, December 5th, the meeting was called to order at 4:05. Subcommittee members in attendance were Ms. Fagan, Mrs. Shavs, and myself. Also in attendance was Superintendent John Cabral, Assistant Superintendent Chris Barata, Dr. John Harrison, THS principal Tracy Menard, math curriculum supervisor Mike Atwood, ELA curriculum supervisor Danielle Coit, director of communities, and Delilah Mendoza, director of English language learners. As chair of the subcommittee, I felt it was important to meet regarding the most recent passage of the Yes on Two campaign, which eliminates the MCAS as a graduation requirement. This was also recommended by Superintendent Cabral soon after, with the addition of the DESI memo reference during the November 20th school committee meeting. It was a robust conversation, to say the least, that centered around the changing competency determination based on this ballot measure, which is now law in the state of Mass. Christopher Barata provided a slideshow to help facilitate the conversation, including information about voting rates for the ballot question in Taunton, consideration of how the community faculty and students feel about the decision, current statistics about students who have not met the requirements of MCAS, and a number of retakes necessary due to not meeting those requirements, issues facing district accountability, and of course, possible routes the district could now take. Of these routes, we discussed the following possibilities. A school committee vote to retain the MCAS as the main competency determination, a legislative rehearsal of the ballot question, and the implementation of the Mass Core as a competency, competency determination. There were several concerns regarding the implications of all such routes, some of which were issues presented by the MCAS in a more general sense. In the words of Superintendent Cabral, the MCAS assisted with equality in assessment, not equity, also referenced by Ms. Mendoza's experience with ELL students, and Mr. Atwood's reference to incoming migrant students, and in my own and others' concerns that it not only takes time away from content class time, but that it's not always the best indicator for student learning. Concerning replacing the MCAS, there were also several concerns. Ms. Shav's concerns over whether students would even take MCAS series without the graduation requirement, as well as how we would confront inequities between districts, ultimately challenging what a diploma would mean across the board without a standard assessment. Last, lastly, when considering alternatives, there were some ideas for creating portfolio assignments, but with an eye to maintaining grading consistency among courses faculty. Mr. Barata had mentioned the implementation of professional development for common assessments. There was also an important conversation about the implementation of Mass Core as competency determination, which was implemented in 2007 and amended in 2018. The Mass Core offers a more holistic approach to curriculum, but there were concerns raised about how it would impact students in the CTE programs. Questions regarding flexibility regarding Mass Core requirements were raised. Despite the conversations, no initial decisions were made. The plan is to wait for further instructions from DESI, which is now included in our packet for today, and then meet again once communication has been received. The meeting adjourned at 5:00 P.M.
Excellent. Chairman Santos.
Received and placed on file.
All and adopt the recommendations. Okay, good. All, seconded by Mr. Laura. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have finance and law. I chaired that subcommittee. The finance and law subcommittee met today with, consisting of Mrs. Shavs, Mr. Vera, and myself. First item on the agenda was a special education expense report. Basically, it's just an ongoing number of how much we're spending on our legal services for special education and student services related matters. Our budget is $50,000 for FY '25. We expensed $6,468 in September, and our present balance remaining for special education and student services related matters remains at $27,383. Nothing out of the ordinary, basically consistent with years past. That was voted unanimously to accept the report. Next up, we had a board of health update report. There was some, some communication regarding where this report should have landed, and it concluded that it should have been at, back at the long-term, long-range planning and school property subcommittee. So the item was tabled. It will be brought forth in the first meeting in January, after some outstanding items are due to be completed over the break. So this item was tabled, voted unanimously. Nothing to report there. Item three was a facilities update, as Mrs. Moynihan brings us up to speed with the work orders, what's outstanding, what is the responsibility of the schools, what is the responsibility of the city side. Nothing out of the ordinary. The work order in Mrs. Moynihan's report was received and placed on file, voted unanimously. Next up, we had the state championship softball and wrestling team field trip. Consider a field trip, Superintendent? So basically, what's happening in your memo, we are hoping to take our softball team and the two state champion wrestlers to the Boston Celtics on December 27th versus the Indiana Pacers. Along with that, we are also supplying commemorative items such as championship jackets and rings to celebrate their success. And in the athletic revolving account, I want to again reiterate, the athletic revolving account remains a balance of approximately $320,000. This anticipated cost would be around $10,000 or less. So again, it was voted unanimously by the subcommittee to approve this. Anybody has any discussions or anything like that, please ask them now. Again, voted unanimously by the subcommittee. The fifth item was the DECA field trip chaperone memo, and it clearly articulates that our policy requires a one-per-10 ratio of adults to students. Like we mentioned earlier, it's 158, I believe, students, and we have 15 chaperones. And we're picking up the expense for the hotel cost for the chaperones, which is only fair. And that expense was mistakenly quoted originally at $1,650 for the rooms, and it's actually $1,750. So no big deal there. We voted unanimously to accept that and approve that. All three subcommittee members voted in favor. Then we had bills payable for FY '25. There was a error when the agenda was published. There was a one missing. So for the public at home, the FY '25 bills payable was $1,111,401.51. That was revised. It was approved and voted unanimously. There were some questions and concerns. I was recorded as voting present on FY, on page four, I believe it was. Let me just pull up my notes. On a PO number 2502159 on page four, the amount of $12,500. The motion was amended and approved unanimously to pay the bills payable for FY '25. And the last remaining item on the agenda was FY '24, the amount of $83,691. Again, that was voted unanimously by the subcommittee to accept and pay the warrant, voted by all three members. And I don't believe there was much to be asked on that warrant. I did mention if the December 18th warrant of FY '24 would be final, and there could be some lingering items that come in into the new year of January still related to FY '24. So basically, that's the report. Which is the committee? Motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the subcommittee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you so much. Next up, we have new business. I have a couple of, Mr. Laura?
We had the subcommittee on elementary this evening, but it's not on the agenda. Okay, very good.
Okay. So for new business, if I could, I, I believe our student representative Natalie Duncan mentioned there's a lot going on in Taunton Public Schools this week. Last night, I had the honor of, of being present at the wrestling match. I believe Mr. Vera and Mrs. Fagan were there. I don't know who else could have been there, but it's a big place. But the championship rings were presented to Ethan Harris and Elijah Prophet. It, it was a great ceremony. I think we, as a school committee, should informally invite our two state champion wrestlers to come before us. Now, one of the wrestlers is at Rhode Island College. I know that we were trying to bring him, him and Elijah in today, but there was just some conflicts because there was other stuff going on. But maybe in the summer, we can bring back these two state champions to be recognized before the school committee. I think that's only appropriate. In the same, in the same building, right up the stairs, was the jazz band concert, which was packed. I don't know how many kids we have in the jazz band, but man, it, it's, it's amazing. And, and the sound and, and the effort that they put in, and we have some beautiful instruments. Those things were shining. I mean, you know, those, those saxes and those horns and all that, they're not cheap, and I know we, we invest in that, but they're well taken care of, because you can see them from the audience, way up in the rafters almost, that they're shiny and they're, and they're being played very well. So hats off to us as a school committee for supporting the arts. And the kids did an excellent job, and parents and grandparents and friends and neighbors were there. And what else? I will be meeting tomorrow with the superintendent, myself and Secretary Fagan. If anybody has any issues or concerns they want to bring to me, send me a text tonight, tomorrow morning. Let me know, and I'll bring it to the superintendent. We lost kind of track on our biweekly meetings. So we're going to get back on track for the 25-year, which we usually meet the Thursday before the agenda's published for the following meeting. So if you keep that in the back of your mind, if there's any concerns, and of course, you're always welcome to reach out to the superintendent directly, like you always do, but if there's something else you want to mention, that's fine. And that's all I have for new business. Superintendent?
Yeah, the only thing I would just remind the committee to practice, for anybody that wants to have something on the agenda, either email Dr. DeMello, CC me, or email me, CC Dr. DeMello, and then we'll make sure the item gets on the agenda, too, in case you forget to bring something up during the regular meeting. That's, that process has worked really well.
Absolutely. That's always.
And I'm sorry, and I'd be remiss if we didn't recognize, one, I appreciate the school committee for always authorizing us to purchase loaner instruments for our middle schools and our high schools. I also want to recognize the city, because they have contributed one-time funds to help buy some loaner instruments, too, and it really benefits our kids.
Absolutely. They're their kids, too, so it's a partnership, right? So that's it for new business. If nothing else, we'll go on to unfinished business, action items update. First, we have the Chamberlain Solar Project update. See enclosure. Superintendent?
Yeah, you have an outline or a timeline of the expected work to take place between now and January 31st, where the project will be commissioned. And we're going to try to plan a little activity with the kiddos at the Chamberlain Elementary School, maybe actually have a live switch or a real switch and have some of the kids flip the switch. So I'll make sure the committee is involved, and hopefully many of you can attend.
Good. Next up, we have the DESI update on competency determination for graduation. See enclosure.
The only thing I'll say about this, I think Mr. Barata and I sat through a one-hour Zoom today and both left with a migraine. So I provided you with some additional backup material regarding the competency determination and the local policy requirements that we'll be working on. So my recommendation, as I stated on the second, on the third page, sorry, is to refer this matter to the curriculum subcommittee, the Mrs. Santos chairs, and we'll continue to work and give this some much-needed thought and come back to the full board with the recommended policy and the competency determination.
Which is the committee, Mrs. Shavs?
I just wanted to make one comment, especially where this is public, that part of this memo talks about inclusivity of former students. And I think that's important, that we're required to accommodate former students who have not earned the competency determination. So even if they've left us and did not get a diploma, there will be something in this for them to come back and receive a diploma. And I think that's important for people that are watching this that may have an interest in it. And I think as we work on how that is going to look, we'll definitely obviously bring it forward. But I just think that it's nice to sort of let this out now, because there could be a lot of, a lot of former students that would be interested in doing this.
Yeah, we, we have a lot of work ahead of us to really be very mindful and very thoughtful about how we go about this, because they're all, they're, as we learned today, every time we have a Zoom meeting with DESI, there are new moving parts that we have to make sure that we're accounting for.
I can't believe that, Superintendent, because we just went through COVID, and there was a moving part every three minutes, I think. Yeah, exactly, unfortunately, but that's DESI. Last item on unfinished business is the action item update. I believe we can strike some items, no? Not at this time? Culinary kitchen is not done yet?
No. Sorry, latest update on the culinary kitchen, we're expecting to have everything, hopefully, up and running, got the final inspections on January 13th. That's when we're hoping to have that one wrapped up. And we probably should have another long-range planning meeting to discuss Hopewell. And I'll work with the chairs of any of the, of the, and I'll work with you, Dr. DeMello, regarding the traffic patterns. But I'll, I'll work with the subcommittee chairs to move some of this work along and hopefully get some of these items finalized and off this list.
Regarding the traffic and parking at Taunton High School, I haven't heard any rumblings. Is anybody on the committee?
Nope.
It's been a very smooth year. Knock on wood. So that's good. Yeah, no, I knocked on wood, Superintendent. I knocked on wood, so it's all good. Next item, we have press. Any press in the audience? None? And before we adjourn, before we adjourn, on, on behalf of all our members, of course, we wish everyone at home a happy holiday season, a very blessed New Year with health and good wishes. And that we all come back healthy for 2025 and have a great 2025. So on behalf of the entire school committee, happy holidays. Motion to adjourn would be in order. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.